Hello, everyone, and welcome to our City Council briefing session for March 22nd. I'm Council President Pro Tem Candace Mum, sitting in for Council President Brian Beggs, who is testifying at the Legislature today on important issues for the City of Spokane. And we'll start off first with going to our Clerk, Ms. Pfister, for roll call.
Council President Pro Tem Mum.
We can't hear you if you were calling somebody.
Oh, that's what called. Okay. Council President Pro Tem Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mum. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Wilkerson. Councilmember Stratton, sorry.
Present.
I'll get it right. Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
And I also do see Council President Beggs.
Yep, my testimony got delayed for half an hour. So, I can, I can take over, Councilmember Mum, if you prefer.
Whatever your pleasure is. If you have to leave, then I'll pick up there. Thank you. Back to you, Council President Beggs.
All right. Thanks for being there. Council, excuse me, Mr. Ormsby.
He's throwing me off.
You're on mute.
That was actually one of my better starts, too. Sorry, I blew it. Thank you, Council President, and Council President Pro Tem. For the March 29th meeting on the consent agenda, the first item is three sets of leases, and the administration is asked to have that item withdrawn, and will come back at a later time, probably with different packages. Item number two is a value blanket renewal, and Lauren Searle from the Water Department is here to present this item.
Did you want to take an action to remove that item number one? Oh, excuse me, did you want to take an action to remove item number one?
Yeah. Is there a motion to table item number one, A through C indefinitely until we get a new package?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed name? Abstentions? Okay, that's tabled indefinitely. We'll look for further conversation.
Okay. Now, I'll move then to the proposed value blanket renewal, and Lauren Searle was to be here to present, and I don't see him unless he's one of the call-ins. Lauren, are you one of the call-ins? I can present this item. It is not to exceed contract or service brass bald owls that will be used through the course of the year in maintenance by the Water Department for water lines. No questions. Would move next to, and Thea Prince is here to present items three, four, and Thea, why don't you go ahead while you're at it and present item number six as well? Well, we're not doing very well. She does not appear to be here either today. So, items three and four, I know something about. Item six, I don't. So, item number three is a five-year value blanket, and it's orders for asphalt mixes to three asphalt providers in the community, Central Premix, Shamrock Manufacturing, and Lakeside Industries. And these are, again, total estimated annual expenditures of not to exceed for various, primarily patchwork that will be done through the course of this next construction season. And item number four is a proposed value blanket renewal with Haskin Steel for miscellaneous stock steel for various uses, primarily in the Street Department, but also in Public Works and Utilities. Any questions on either of those? Item five is a master contract with Copiers Northwest, and Mike Sloan from IT is here to present this.
Thank you, Mr. Ormsby. Good afternoon, Council. This item asks for your approval for a master contact, contract with Copiers Northwest. This is a renewal, the previous three-year contract that we had, had multiple years of RFP responses to, is now offered through a state contract, and so we're asking for that approval for $300,000. This is a not to exceed. This contract includes maintenance on the floor Copiers and printers that we currently have, and additional software maintenance support service, and it's a resource for buying printers. Dell is getting out of the printer business for the models that we purchase, and will be looking to use this contract to printer purchases as we move forward.
Any questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, on item number six, I would ask the council, I will circle back with Thea, and the item's covered in your packet, but beyond what's in the packet, I don't know, and I'll try to forward further information to the council, and make sure that Thea's available if there are any questions this week or at the meeting for next Monday. Item number seven is an amendment to the insurance brokerage contract that we brought to the council about three weeks ago, and there are two very important components of the insurance that we buy for cyber protection and terrorism issues that were not included in the provisions of services for the provider, or for the broker to provide. So, we'd like to add those items, and the additional fee is a not to exceed amount of $14,720, and we would recommend approval of this amendment. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Hey, Mike?
Yes.
Councilmember Cathcart here. I was just wondering, is this different than the insurance policy that we approved last year? Because I remember it did include something for cyber, and, and I'm just curious how this is different from that.
We're going to expand the scope of the coverage, and we're also, we have some limited terrorism coverage now, but we're expanding the scope of that coverage as well, which is going to require more work by the broker.
Okay. Because I know I was really concerned just last year, it seemed to me how limited it was, and so I'm glad, really glad it's coming forward. But I'm just curious, has anything happened in the meantime that's kind of urging this on?
Well, I think we've all seen reports in other regions or communities, Post Falls being one, they had a report, it ended up being a false report, but there's a number of reports out there of threats to IT systems in particular of municipalities. I think, in, in this city, of course, we, we didn't have a direct breach, but the State Auditor's Office had a breach of their system, which had an impact on the city, and so that wasn't a covered event here, and the State Auditor's Office would cover, or their contractor would cover any damages. But it tends, it continues to be a very important area of exposure, and I see Mike Sloan on the phone as well, and he might have something to add to that.
Yeah, and Mr. Ormsby, a small correction. The latest false positive is with Liberty Lake.
Liberty Lake, excuse me.
Prove to be a false, but however, Post Falls did receive a ransomware, and they did have to respond to that. They were locked down until they dealt with it. So, that's the closest one, but throughout the state, we're seeing additional issues with the latest Microsoft exchange issue, where we've been, we've been lucky, we were patched for it, but we're seeing organizations just in the state, but throughout the world. And based on the advisement that we're getting from CI Security, a firm here in the state, we are advised to readdress any of our insurance coverages and define print within. It's just, it's a real problem.
Thank you, guys. I'm grateful this is getting beefed up.
Good, good question. Item number eight is a proposed contract amendment with Desamone Consulting, who is our federal lobbyist, and Brian McClatchy, I believe, is on the phone to brief this item.
Thank you, Mr. Ormsby. This is the first of a potential of four one-year extensions with our federal lobbyist, Desamone Consulting Group. This is the same contract amount as in the first year. No other change other than the effective date and the one-year term.
Thanks, Brian. Next is a proposed contract to implement the new financial planning and management application, and Tanya Wallace, our CFO, is here to present this item.
Thank you, City Council members. We did bring to you last week at the Finance Administration Committee a preview of our new planning and management system, Questica. So, you have this contract in front of you. It is for five years with four renewals. The first year is about $150,000 for the subscription cost, which includes a number of licenses for the many modules, and then about $194,000, $195,000 in professional services that primarily covers the implementation and configuration, as well as many other items to, to get us going. We anticipate about anywhere between seven and nine months for full implementation. So, that is the contract that you have for you today. Any questions, Council members?
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
Then we go, next we go on to item 10, which is an amendment to the interlocal agreement with the UDPA, the University District Public Development Authority, relative to the Sprague Phase Two project, and Catherine Miller from Integrated Capital Management is with us this afternoon to brief this item.
Good afternoon, Council. This interlocal agreement originally was signed in February. It's really an agreement about reimbursing the city for improvements to Sprague, and this amendment is including not only to reimburse for improvements to Sprague Avenue, but also to Riverside Avenue between Grant Street and Sherman, which is back behind Sprague near the U District Bridge. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. And then finally, we, the final two reports. Item 11 is a report of the mayor for both claims and payments on obligations for parks and libraries and for, and without parks and libraries, and then also for payroll claims, and those blanks will be filled in prior to next week's meeting. And then finally, item number 12 is a placeholder for City Council meeting minutes, which will also be presented to the council for consideration and hopeful approval at next week's meeting. We then move on to the legislative agenda, and first we have special budget ordinances, and the first deals with the Asset Management Fund and the transfer of various funds to cover action budgets for loan proceeds, capital expenditures, expenditures and debt service related to the SIP loan, and Michelle Hughes, the Director of Accounting, is here to present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Ormsby, and thank you, Council members. This ordinance is for the SBO for, to create budget for funding for the SIP loan of the 1.2 million that's in the resolution down below in 2002-10021, I think, and so it's in regards to that, and this is just allowing, creating the budget for us to be able to spend the capital on the parking meter program.
Michelle, I have a question. Is this 1.3 plus, 1.2, or is it kind of the same, overlapping?
It is the same. So, it's 1.2 million is SIP loan proceeds, and the other $100,000 is just, it transfers from one fund to another fund for debt service and interest payment. So, it's just creating the budget in 5901 to make that debt service payment.
Got it. Yep. And we're, we're still, I think we're scheduled to have a meeting, because there was, there was original plan to have kiosks in the downtown retail, and then that got changed, and we still haven't quite got the report on that yet, and my understanding is how many kiosks versus how many meters might impact the cost, and then the second thing is whether or not we can pay for this out of the American Recovery Program, since we lost so much parking revenue, this would be sort of the sort of thing to do that, rather than going into debt, but there's a question of how long that will take to do, and so, there's still some questions. But we're going to have a meeting, so rather than change anything, I think we should just leave it on.
Okay. I believe through the email strings that were going around this morning, how I understand it, is that this was deferred from last week to this week. There is a meeting scheduled for the 31st. However, I believe the 31st is after council meeting on this, come Monday, the 29th. So, I don't, I can have Chris Becker reach out to you to answer all of your questions about the program itself and what they're installing.
Yeah. So, again, I don't think we need to change it right now, leave it on, but it might get deferred, depending on those communications, so.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And next we have various account transfers relating to the Police Guild contract, and Paul and Josie, our Budget Director, is here to present this item.
Thank you, Mike, and good afternoon, City Council. So, I have, actually, the next four SBOs on the agenda, I'll brief the first one, ordinance C36029, as Mike mentioned, is for the retro pay for the Police Guild contract in the amount of $9,875,000.
And Paul, why don't you just continue on with the next three as well, since you're already trying to go?
Okay. The second SBO, ordinance C36030, creates a position in the IT fund to support the city's fleet and recycling management systems. The amount is $50,000 split between the solid waste and fleet funds. Number three, ordinance C36031, allows for the transfer of a field position from Public Works to Engineering. The amount is approximately $79,000. And the last SBO, ordinance C36032, is $6,400 from the city's Channel Five Fund, which allows reimbursement for School District 81 for capital equipment purchases.
Any questions, Paul, on any of the special budget ordinances? Okay. Thank you. Next, we move into resolutions and final reading ordinances. The first resolution relates to Michelle's previous presentation regarding the SBO. Michelle, is there anything further to add here? And I guess if any council members have issues or questions regarding the issuance of the bond, please feel free to raise those. Michelle, do you have anything more to add?
The only thing I have to, thank you, Mike. The only thing I have to add is that this is just a resolution allowing us to move forward with the SIP loan, that we're in line to draw the funds when we can draw the funds, but we can't obviously do that without the SBO. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you. None. I'll move to the next resolution, and that is a resolution recognizing the Fifth Avenue Community Strategy, and Maren Murphy is here to present this item.
Yeah, good afternoon, Council President, Council members. So, this is a resolution on the Fifth Avenue Initiative and draft community strategy, and I briefed council at the March 8th Urban Development Committee. So, the Fifth Avenue Initiative is a neighborhood-driven partnership with the city to reimagine Fifth Avenue in the East Central Neighborhood, and after a number of discussions and efforts over the last few years, the focus is now to adopt the strategy by resolution as a declaration of priorities and actions to revitalize and reimagine East Fifth Avenue. And we presented to the Plan Commission at a public, at a workshop on February 10th, and then had a public hearing on February 24th, and the Plan Commission did recommend council adopt by resolution. So, next week, we look forward to bringing the project forward with a brief overview of the initiative and the process. Again, we have invited one of the project team leads to join me, so hopefully they are able to, and then, of course, we look forward to opportunity for public testimony, and Councilmember Wilkerson is our council sponsor, so we've been working with her throughout this project as well.
Any questions for Maren? Thanks, Maren.
Thank you.
The next resolution is to approve a settlement agreement on a case that Kyle Tuig and I briefed the council on, on March 8th. It involves a construction claim, or actually, oh, I skipped you, Kevin, sorry. You're there, you're smiling face, sorry. We should do that first. So, this is a presentation on applications to amend the city's comprehensive plan and setting the schedule for this next year for the work, and Kevin Freebot is here for planning.
Sorry, Mike, I thought I got it wrong.
No, no.
I got home, it's a bit better. That's all right. Good afternoon, City Council, it's good to see you. Just as a, as a reminder, this is the, this is this year's docket of possible comprehensive plan amendment applications under, that we might be under consideration, and the resolution 0023 is the resolution that will set the docket for the year, where you select which applications that we will process in full. So, this is just the beginning of the process, and as I, as you can see here on the screen, we've got seven proposed amendments to the land use plan map from private individuals throughout the city, and there's an eighth proposal for some additional amendments to the bike facilities map. You have, you have all of the findings from the subcommittee that met to, to recommend which ones should move forward, and we did have a study session on March 4th about this. Just one quick additional item for folks at home, too, there is a project website if people have questions, and of course, we're always taking comments, there might, there is my contact information. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm sure it is, start you late there. Now, we'll move to the resolution approving a settlement agreement with, with, for a claim filed by Murphy Brothers doing business at Shamrock Paving. This was a matter that, again, Kyle and I briefed the council on, on March 8th. It involves construction on the Lincoln Monroe couplet from Second Avenue up to Eighth Avenue, and it was a contract that was performed in 2015 and 16. Initially, the amount of damages claimed was over $1 million. The claim that was actually filed with the city was for $825,000. After talking with the council and receiving authority from the mayor, we were able to resolve the case within the range that we told the, both the council and the mayor, that we thought would be a fair settlement amount, and that's $500,000. That money is available. There was money remaining from the original contract that was set aside to pay for this work, and in addition to that, Catherine Miller and ICM has also reserved some funds, and together, we will have sufficient money to pay that settlement, should the council approve it at your meeting next week, and I'd be happy to answer any additional questions, if you have any. Maren, do you have a question, or are you just moving your hand? The next four ordinances relate to items that are set on the hearing agenda for next week, and.
Mike?
Yes?
Can I interrupt you for one second? I'm sorry. There should be five items for next week. We accidentally left off ordinance C36023, which is the first of those five that I presented last week.
Okay, and I'm sure Terry Pfister, the city clerk, got reference of that. So, so I take it we would also have an additional hearing as well? Amanda?
That's correct.
Okay. So, Amanda is with us today. Amanda Beck briefed the council, new employment planning, as you recall, briefed the council on these five items at the meeting last week, and the hearings have been set for next Monday, and these ordinances are to implement the results of the hearing, and Amanda's here if council members have additional questions or issues that they would like to raise at this point, but I think Amanda did a pretty good job of covering all those issues last week. But if anyone has new ones, please feel free to raise them.
Well, I'm just wondering, if one was left off, was that done, done in error, and it can be corrected, or do we need to make a motion and include it?
Do I have the mic? It was a.
You know, I think to be on the safe side, we ought to add that back in by motion, both here on the ordinance side, and also for the, for the notation for the public hearing.
And could you give, give us the number again, Amanda, and then Councilmember Cathcart?
Yes. The ordinance that needs to be added back in is C36023.
Okay. So, I would move to suspend the rules to add an agenda item, C3, I wrote it down, 36203, is that what you said?
You don't have to suspend the rules, just, we'll just add it. Yep.
I won't make a motion to add that ordinance.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to add it, both in its ordinance form and hearing form. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed name? Any abstentions? Okay, that is added to the proposed agenda, and that brings us to the end, I believe. Mr. Ormsby?
It does, Council President. With that addition, that concludes the advanced agenda for March 29th.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the advanced agenda as amended?
So moved. Second. Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I just wondered how Karen's cap voted there, I wasn't sure.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, okay. Any opposed name? Any abstentions? And I, I heard one now, so, okay. Advanced agenda's approved. Turning to today's agenda, there's a couple of changes requested. One, on the consent agenda, I'm not sure if we can do this or not, because I'm not sure if it was circulated, but there was a request to replace an updated version of item four. Ms. Pfister, do you know anything about that, or does someone know about that?
That was placed in the council packets, the updated version.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. So that's been in the packet and filed. Is there a motion to include that revised version that's been filed officially?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's added. And, Mr. Ormsby, there was some emails about item eight. Are we just keeping that as is?
Yes, Council President. Sorry, after we sorted it all out, we are going to have two beds. We're just going to need to do another contract for the second bed. So contract presented last week ends up hurting us, at least in the short term.
Okay, great. So there is a request to add two items to our agendas today. One is item 11 on the consent agenda, and then there's also a resolution regarding the hate, well, I should say, the violence against Asian women from last week that was circulated during our committee meeting. So I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules for purposes of changing the agenda. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? All right. Then regarding item 11, this was briefed at study session. Basically, there's some additional grant money available to get this truck for hazmat response, and they would like to purchase it. So they're looking for a motion to add that item 11 to our agenda tonight. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. And just to be clear, when I said tonight, I mean our consent agenda today. All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? Hearing and seeing none. That is added. And then is there a motion? Well, first let me know what, do we have a number, Ms. Fister, for the resolution that we circulated this afternoon?
Resolution 2021-0025.
25, okay. Is there a motion to add resolution 25 to tonight's legislative agenda?
So moved.
Oh, second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Abstentions? All right. That's added to our agenda tonight, our legislative agenda. And then on resolution 19, the sponsors updated their resolution slightly, and it was in time to be filed and on base and that, but we just need a motion to substitute the new version.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion about that? All right. All those in favor of substituting indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? Okay. I am the turn it over to you, Councilmember Mom. I have to go for the consent agenda approval. So thank you so much. I'll see you all at 6:00.
All right. Let's see. I think we have Ms. Fister read it all, and then we take a motion. Is that right?
Correct.
Yes.
All right. Terry, it's all yours.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, value blanket order increase with transport equipment to increase the expenditure for air brakes for the Fleet Department increased from $49,999 to $100,000. Number two, value blanket with DNL Supply Company Incorporated, Moses Lake, Washington, for various access frames and covers for wastewater maintenance, $270,000, including tax. Number three, value blanket renewal with Spokane Tint and Sheet Iron Works Incorporated for sewer bins, $75,000, including tax. Number four, contract with NeoGov Incorporated, El Segunda, California, for HR software support to include subscription services and right to use NeoGov licenses from February 12, 2021 through February 11, 2022, $67,548.75, including tax. Item number five, contract with Electronic Data Collection Corporation, Syracuse, New York, for citation issuance and management, including adjudication allowing us to transition to license plate-based virtual permits, provide a customer self-service portal for permits, applications, citation, payment, and appeal requests, and replace our current LPR system, $1,200,000. Contract begins March 15, 2021, and is a five-year contract with the option for annual extensions for parking services. Number six, amendment to accept an additional $44,515 in grant funding to be used in the investigation resolution of sexual assault cases by the Spokane Police Department. $44,515 revenue, total grant award, $90,133. Item number seven has been withdrawn. Number eight, contract with Catholic Charities of Eastern Washington to provide a trial dedicated respite bed program for community court for March 1, 2021 through March 1, 2022, $30,660, including tax. Item number nine, report of the mayor pending claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through March 12, 2021, total $6,253,717.91 with Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $5,765,352.68. Item number 10, city council meeting minutes for March 8 and March 11, 2021. Item number 11, purchase from RWC International of a new hazmat truck to transport hazmat spill response and decontamination equipment for the fire department using a grant from the Department of Ecology, $72,491.50.
Thank you so much, Ms. Fister. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
You went back on mute.
If this ends our briefing session, I don't believe we have an executive session. Is that correct? All right. Thank you, everyone. We will see you at 6 o'clock. We are adjourned.